Good evening. I'm going to call the April, April.
Okay.
September, excuse me, September 20th, um, meeting of the Planning Board to order. I am actually not going to take roll call, but I wanted to let, um, all the participants, who are attending this meeting via Zoom, that the reason for the, um, delay is because we are awaiting, uh, the appearance of one of our members who's, uh, been involved in this process, um, since its inception and has also, what, delivered, uh, his findings. So it is important that we, uh, wait until he gets here and we've been advised that he should be here momentarily. So with that said, if you can just bear with us for a few more minutes and again, I apologize for, um, for the delay in getting started. It's 6:43 PM and I'm calling the September 20th, 2022 Planning Board Meeting to Order. On our agenda tonight are, um, final votes on the special permit application of Ch- Chabaco Hill Capital Partners LLC and its related stormwater management, uh, permit application. So at this juncture, I will take roll call. So when I call your name, would you please indicate, um, that you're present? Uh, Rick Mitchell?
Present.
Richard Boroff?
Here.
Jonathan Poor?
Present.
And Amel Dahlquist?
Uh, present.
Pat Whitton?
Present.
Bill Wheaton?
Present.
And Marnie Crouch, present. And Corey Boyu, are you here?
Uh, I'm gonna have to unmute.
Yes, I'm here, sorry. Something got tripped up in the mute button there.
Uh, and then for the edification of the participants, the, all the first names that I called as well as my own are entitled to vote on these applications. Corey is an associate member and he is not entitled to vote. So I'm going to jump right in and I'm going to, um, go through my findings and I'm going to apologize because I think I may very well go over, um, the time. Uh, so I'm going to, as I said, um...
Uh, so, uh, who's gonna get you under control when you, uh, go out of, out of bounds?
I will leave that to Amel.
Oh, great.
Not leaving it to you.
As long as it's not 50 minutes.
Oh, I'm not, I don't know. I can't guarantee anything anymore. Uh, so, uh, as I've mentioned, Section 2, 8.2.31.1 is informed by Section 8.2.16.2 and 8.2.16.3, the building and design standards. So the first, uh, finding that I have to make is essentially whether the project is compatible with adjacent land uses and with the character of the neighborhood in which it is located. So the first question to ask with respect to this finding is what are adjacent land uses and what is the character of the neighborhood? The second question, of course, is whether the project is compatible with the neighborhood. Adjacent land uses are residential's home, residential's, residential. Homes vary in size and concomitantly fair market value. Small, medium, and large homes exist in the neighborhood. Most are characterized by natural landscape buffering along Chabaco Road and all have limited lawn space. The character of the neighborhood is unique in Hamilton. Chabaco Road is a scenic road and the neighborhood is rural even by Hamilton's standards. Chabaco Road has a remote ambiance owing to the extensive woodlands, ponds, and Chabaco Lake as well as, uh, the Chabaco Woods Conservation Area. Moreover, the neighborhood is quiet, not well-lit by street lighting. Residents describe walking their dogs in the middle of the street because of the absence of through traffic on Chabaco Road, which is unpaved, um, in the east, um, uh, toward the east of Chabaco Woods. In contrast, the entrance to the project will be bordered by a sheer 20-foot cliff faced topped with a chain-linked fence on one side and a stormwater management, that's Mana BNP, on the other side. There will be significant disturbance of the existing landscape buffering along Chabaco Lo- Road. Jonathan calculated 230 linear feet. And even if the trees and shrubs that the applicant proposes to plant survive drought and deer pressure, uh, given the unknown duration of the project and the length of time necessary for the trees to mature and provide any type of buffer, the entrance to the development will be unlike anything in the existing neighborhood. Dwelling units stacked along the development roadway likely will be visible over or through the tree canopy, uh, for many years. Moreover, roadway lighting will not be obscured, um, at the, and at the, and near the entrance. The addition of 50 condominium units coupled with deducing forested land together with a newly landscaped entranceway and potential glare from light emanating from the site, uh, the interiors of the units as well as light, lights on porches and sidewalks will be incompatible with the character of the neighborhood and an urban form will be imposed on a rural neighborhood. While the architectural designs do not reflect vernacular New England architecture, the art, the actual architectural design of the units is not significant, it's how they fit within the landscape. The, the units did not reflect traditional sighting of homes as the units are situated on steep slopes rather than areas sheltered from the weather. The use of, uh, over 1,600 linear feet of riprap to armor slopes for erosion control, again, as calculated by Jonathan and shown on erosion control map C-13 through C-15 would be particularly unappealing as the riprap would be visible from the proposed trail that circumnavigates the south and west portions of the site and likely would be visible from Essex Street particularly in the winter owing to sun glare from the rocks. I, I conclude it would be possible to design a project that would be compatible with adjacent land uses. Indeed, all uses are in fact residential. Had unprotected natural landscape features been protected, the need for unsightly riprap and forest destruction could have been, uh, at least substantially reduced. Nevertheless, the existing proposed entrance and the sheer ledge cliff and nearby rep rap is completely antithetical to the character of the neighborhood and completely inconsistent with adjacent land uses that fit unobtrusively within the landscape. I cannot find that the development complies with Section 8.2.31.1. The second finding that I may, must make is does the project mitigate impact to abutting land and natural resources by reason of air or water pollution, noise, dust, vibration, or stormwater runoff? In considering this finding, Section 8.2.13.2 general requirements regarding minimizing disturbance and maintenance of as much of the site as possible in its natural state and Section 8.2.17 lighting are pertinent. The Planning Board rules and regulations concerning design plans, specifically Section 3. D. Point, uh, two, two small i's, point two, provide for an analysis of environmental impacts including measures to protect air quality, minimize noise, prevent noxious emissions and damages or threats to the visual environment. With respect to lighting, Amel has noted that the, noted the potential for glare from project lighting. Project lighting will be, the project likely will be a very bright spot, um, in an otherwise very dark area with a remote field when walkway lighting and porch lighting and interior lighting is added to the roadway lighting. The applicant hasn't, the applicant contends that because it is preserving farmland and portions of the site containing wetlands and buffer areas, it is entitled to remove all the hillside and granite ledge from the six eight, 16-acre development site, presumably because it impedes its preferred development model which it employed at the Village of Magnolia Shores and the village at Canterbury Brook Farm. A site, by the way, which contained virtually no trees, no ledge, and was at the, at the time before the development, um, an eyesore in Hamilton owing to the neglect of the farm. The choices made out, at the outset directly lead to problems associated with the duration of the project with its concomitant noise and dust. The duration of the project is unknown. The applicant's construction sequence spreadsheets are confusing in and of themselves, but the duration of the project is tied to, to the sale of 50% of the units in Phase One and the absence, and, and, and the absence of time allocated to weather delays other than for road paving and blasting. Moreover, the construction sequence is based on a five-day work week, but proposed conditions submitted by the applicant contain a provision for a six-day work week from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and from 7:30 AM to 7:00 PM on Saturday. The shorter work week adds to noise, dust, um, and poor air quality. The longer work week adds to the duration of the project. Accordingly, the best-case scenario for the duration of the project, which I accept for the purposes of my findings, is four years as set forth by the applicant. Um, I find that the impacts to the neighborhoods are ones that I cannot live with. I find that the disruption owing to the scale of the project and noise from construction and from truck traffic in particular would place an intolerable burden on abutters and residents in proximity to the site. The duration in and of itself is problematic, but more significantly, the applicant did not demonstrate by way of credible or convincing evidence any effective means of mitigating no- noise and, noise and diesel fumes from truck traffic, uh, as well as dusk. With respect to noise mitigation in particular, the applicant stated that it will place the rock crusher, which likely would have a 95, um, decibel level at the lowest portion of the development. But location of the rock crusher is a bit of a mystery as it does not appear on the Phase A Construction Management Plan or the Phase II Construction Management Plan, but appears in two different places on two Phase B Construction Management Plans, both of which are dated March 8, 2022. One in the Phase II portion of the development and one in the Phase I portion of the site. So, um, the, the location of the rock crusher, which the applicant said was to be at the lower portion of the site, uh, is really, it's really unclear where it would be, um, from the construction management plans. So it's really indeterminate and, and the noise from the rock crusher could be a, a, a real problem. Uh, John Durkin of Onyx Corporation indicated that he was not an expert on noise. He stated that the rock hammer used for blasting had a noise dampening enclosure, but he did not address noise from the rock crushing piece of equipment. Um, and I note here that OSHA lists construction activities on a site at 100 decibels. And John Durkin also didn't address noise from chainsaws, uh, the truck traffic entering and exiting the site, or contract, or construction activities such as road paving, rock distribution, and grading. Um, the applicant did not address the level of noise associated with truck traffic on Ch- Chabaco Road for the four-year duration of the project and the noise associated with large trucks entering and leaving the site, including Bentley Warren's 18-wheel trucks, which most likely have a decibel level of 90 to 95. The applicant did not produce any written materials with specific commitments as to when and how it would measure noise and it did not directly address the provisions of the Code of Massachusetts Regulations 310 CMR 7.10 and the Massachusetts Noise Policy, other than to indicate that it, there would be compliance, uh, in words to the effect that noise dissipates with distance. The calculations related to measure noise, however, are different for, for sound pressure and sound intensity, intensity and are by no means s- as, as simplistic as stated. Ms. Mann stated berms would be constructed to, to, uh, mitigate noise, but she is an attorney, not an engineer, and there, there was no expert testimony as to where the berms would be located and how effective they would be. In short, the applicant provided woefully insufficient evidence that, that it could even comply with 310 CMR 7.10 in view of how quiet Chabaco Road is relative to the decibel levels of the equipment to be used on the site. Quote-unquote "trust us" is insufficient evidence to enable a finding as to mitigate, mitigating impacts to abutting land from noise and parenthetically, no peer reviewer addressed noise and for that matter, dust. With respect to dust mitigation, the rock drills for blasting are self-contained and fitted with vacuum filters. Water can be added to ensure removal of heavy or silica dust. The rock crusher can also be sprayed with water. Nevertheless, there was agreement that there would be some level of dust at the site. The question is how much and unknown. Upon considering, consideration of those observations, I find the project fails to satisfy Section 8.2.31.2. Uh, turning to, uh, Section 8.2.31.3, I have to determine whether the project provides safe and convenient access to the site from existing or proposed roads and to proposed structures thereon with particular reference to pedestrian and vehicular state, safety, traffic flow and control and access in case of fire or emergency. This finding, uh, is affected by Section 8.2. Point, uh, I'm sorry, Section 8.2.31.3 implicates Section 8.2.19 Site Access Roadway Design and Management. The applicant's attorney was candid that the Village of Chabaco Hill is not for seniors in the familiar sense of the term, rather it's for a younger segment of the senior population, those who are, quote, "generally vibrant, active individuals," unquote. In sum, they are healthy individuals who no longer want to bear the burden of single-family homeownership. These are the words of Jill Mann. The applicant, however, also touted the concept of aging in place, but did not discuss the ramifications of what aging sometimes entails after 55 years of age, and I note hip replacement and heart conditions as a few examples. Uh, it also did not address what individuals who experience those conditions will do to overcome the challenges of the slopes that riddle the property, um, without relocating. In sum, because of the imposition of the project on the site, the sidewalks and roadways, a portion of which contain 10% grades, will likely pose challenges for the residents if they intend to age in place at the Village of Chabaco Hill. For example, the town peer reviewer consultant TEC observed, "The sidewalk adjacent to the internal roadway has a slope equaling the roadway slope of up to 10%. Sidewalks with a running slope of over 5% are considered ramps and shall comply with 521 CMR 24. Rams may not have slopes over 8.3% without landings provided for turning and resting every 30 feet and must provide handrails." The applicant should discuss the need for a waiver request from the Massachusetts AAB, um, requirement of 521 CMR 24. In response, the applicant indicated that the Village of Chabaco Hill project does not fall under the jurisdiction of any accessibility codes, including, uh, the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, the Fair Housing Act, or the American with Disabilities Act. T E Sp- T E C's response was to recommend that accessibility requirements be met, quote, "to the greatest extent possible within the site due to the proposed senior housing use." The issue with the roads and sidewalks gradient will be compounded in inclement weather, particularly as it is unclear where snow removal from sidewalks and driveways would be plowed other than into the street or whether it would have to be, uh, trucked off the site. Excuse me. Others have noted the two-to-one slope that exists between the front and the backyards of some units, which, uh, is a safety consideration. T E C also observed in its August 30th, 2020 report that the existing roadway width of Chabaco Road is between 20 and 25 feet in width with no separate facilities for pedestrians or bicyclists. Pedestrian and bicycle safety may be impacted with the addition of project vehicular traffic volumes. The applicant should discuss any mitigation that may be appropriate to pedestrian and bicycle safety accommodations along Chabaco Road between the site driveway and Essex Street. The applicant responded by stating, "It is not likely that the project residents will be walking from the site along Chabaco Road. However, the project is proposing onsite parking areas where people are able to walk or bike the trails that connect to Chabaco Woods." Thus, the applicant did not address the safety of non-residents walking or biking on Ch- Chabaco Road after project completion. More importantly, the applicant did not address pedestrian and bicycle, bicycle safety during construction, then when there will be at least, uh, 4,324 Bentley Warren trucks leaving the site and 4,324 Bentley Warren trucks returning to the site and countless other vehicles, trucks and vehicles associated with the construction along Chabaco Road, Essex Streets, and other streets in town, not just the haul route to be used by Bentley Warren trucks. In this regard, I note, the other day, uh, I witnessed a 10-wheel truck completely blocking both the north and southbound lanes of Route 1A in Wenham as it attempted to make a right-hand turn to gain access to the Wenham Country Club, of course, across from Tender Cup Farm. That was one truck and not a very big one. A big one, but not as big as the Bentley Warren trucks. I find that the application fails to comply with Section 8.2.31.4. Turning to 8.2.31.4, I'm sorry, I misspoke. The application does not comply with 8.2.31.3. Turning to Section 8.2.31.4, "Does the project provide for adequate capacity for public service facilities and utilities to service the proposed development, such as water pressure and sewer capacity?" I find that the project does comply with Section 2.31.4, but like, uh, Amel, I, I note the Dewberry Study, which should be of concern not just, uh, for any future developments, but for every resident here in Hamilton. Um, turning to Section 8.2.31.5, I must find that the project provides visual and noise buffering, um, of the development to minimize impact to abutting properties. Section 2.31.5 implicates Section 8.2.13, uh, general requirements which require the use of low-impact development techniques where applicable in minimizing disturbance. Visual and noise buffering is problematic. Section 8.2.22 requires a landscape buffer around the perimeter of the property. The buffer is interrupted in some areas. Uh, as Jonathan has noted, um, the existence and maintenance of that buffer will be affected by the removal of ledge and the construction activities that likely will damage root system. And, um, there's a very real potential for tree stress, tree stress and dieback. The project will not be entirely obscured from Chabaco Road even after trees and shrubs are planted at the completion of construction. Those trees were not mature to provide any kind of reasonable buffer for five to 10 years after completion of construction, so there would be no effective screening of the site for at least 10 years. Moreover, the trees would not block the visibility of portions of the project below their canopies and above their shrubs, leaving views of the rip rap at the gravel forebay and elsewhere visible. As I noted, the noise associated with the years of construction has not been adequately or convincingly addressed and the applicant did little more than ask the board to trust that it would comply with applicable regulations. No repeer, peer reviewer, as I noted, weighed in on any of these issues. I find that the application does not comply with Section 8.2.31.5 of the Senior Housing Bylaw.
Yeah, 20 minutes.
I'm, I'm hurrying.
Okay.
I've got another 10 or so, how's that? Does the project provide for the perpetual preservation and maintenance of open space trails in recreation areas? Uh, I find that the applicant, uh, has complied in part with this requirement because it is proposing a conservation restriction, which will provide for the preservation of open space in the regulated conservation areas outside the development area. Although the proposed condominium documents do not specifically provide for the maintenance of trails, they could be amended to do so. Um, the only amenity for residents of this project is the trail state, system, and it is not readily accessible to, um, residents. Um, they either have to go to the entrance, uh, of the project or traverse areas of rep rap. So again, I, I find that Section 8.3, 2.31.6 is partially satisfied. Now I'm going to turn to, um, Section 8.2.31.7, uh, which is the requirement that the project demonstrate compliance with the intent of Section 8.1, the Open Space and Farmland Preservation Development Special Permit Design Process, in order to encourage cluster development. And this has given the board much pause, so I'm going to apologize to all board members, but I'm going to review, um, some matters before I make my finding. but I'm going to review some matters before I make my finding. So I think that it's important to understand how bylaws should be interpreted. So I look to Robert's Rules for Interpreting Bylaws. And so in the first instance, if bylaws are not ambiguous, they should be interpreted as written. No interpretation of a bylaw should be made if the interpretation creates a conflict with another bylaw. If a provision of a bylaw has two reasonable interpretations, and one interpretation makes another bylaw absurd or impossible to reconcile, the interpretation that has no negative effect should be made. Stated another way, the board should give effect to provisions in a bylaw to avoid any construction that would, with the language of another provision, superfluous and operative or insignificant. So with those principles in mind, I'll address the issue raised by the prefatory language to Section 8.2.31, which states, "In addition to the criteria set forth in Section 8.2.5, the board must make its written findings." And 8.2.5 provides that if the application contains an open space element, the OSFPD Special Design Process shall apply. And we all know what is required by Section 8.1.12. And I'm going to just highlight the provisions of 8.1.12 that have directives in them. This is the content of 8.1.12 that is different from its caption. And it is the content, not the caption, that must control the process for 8.2.31.7. So here is the content of 8.1.12. "To the maximum extent feasible, the proposed development area shall consist of land outside the identified conservation areas. And those areas, as we know, are both regulated conservation areas and unprotected natural features, such as steep slopes, as well as cultural features and the like. The location of dwelling units should account for proximity to common open space and other amenities, including community buildings for use by residents of the development. Toward this end, the number of dwelling units with direct access to amenities of the development should be maximized. The layout of trails should anticipate internal and external connections to existing and other potential roads, trails, and sidewalks." So in summary, those directives reflect the purpose and intent of the process as set forth in the caption to 8.1.12. The process is not just an exercise that can be undertaken and then jettisoned. There is a purpose to the process, and those are in Section 8.1.12, 12, 2, 3, and 4. Were the board to interpret that process as merely an exercise, the purpose and intent would be superfluous and irrelevant in Section 8.1.12 and Section 8.2.31.7 could not be read in harmony. Reading them narrowly with a focus on the caption leads to an absurd result of sanctioning a process that conceivably have no meaningful outcome. Requiring the applicant to expend funds to comply with Section 8.1.12, soliciting comments from the board with respect to Section 8.1.12, but in the end permitting an applicant to do whatever it wants with the site, as long as the site does not contain regulated conservation areas, is an interpretation that it makes it impossible to reconcile all the provisions that I've outlined, Section 8.1.12, Section 8.2.25, and Section 8.2.31.7. That's an absurd result. Now, if that doesn't convince anyone, I will address Section 8.2.4, which implements the Senior Housing Bylaw. And that is the Planning Board Rules and Regulation. And that section provides, "The planning board shall adopt, and from time to time may amend, senior housing special permit rules and regulations to implement this section. Such regulations shall include, but not be limited to submission requirements, fees, plans, requirements such as size, form, number, and content, development standards, site standards, and standards for building placement and design. Such rules and regulations are required and authorized under General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9, and shall be adopted after voting by the planning board." Now, a mention was made of Section 8.1.16 of the Open Space and Farmland Preservation Development Bylaw. And that is a section captioned Special Permit Design Standards, and it contains five mandatory provisions. But the Open Space and Farmland Preservation Development Bylaw has a provision identical to Section 8.2.4, namely Section 8.1.5. And what is more significant is that the substantive rules and regulations that implement both the Open Space and Farmland Development and Senior Housing Bylaw are identical in all material respects. Accordingly, I find that to satisfy 8.1.12 and the directives embedded in it, the applicant must be guided by the identical provisions of the rules and regulations that implement both bylaws, regardless of whether the Senior Housing Bylaw lacks a similar provision to the mandatory provision of Section 8.1.16. So I am not going to read the rules and regulations that pertain to both the Open Space and Farmland Preservation Development Bylaw and the Senior Housing Bylaw. I would like to, but I did it at the last meeting, and in the interest of time, I will just proceed with my finding. That I conclude that the site-specific and sensitive design is the first step in the development of the Senior Housing Project, and it is derived from reading all the sections, 8.1.12, 8.2.25, 8.2.31.7, in harmony with one another and taking into account the applicable rules and regulations. And here I want to note that Rick made a very important comment at one of our last meetings, and he said, "There are only a few tracts of land in Hamilton where a project similar in size to the one proposed by the applicant can be built." Because developable land is scarce in Hamilton, "Development should be guided by principles of sustainability and resiliency, not merely increased density and short-term fiscal benefits without consideration of planning principles embedded in our bylaws, as well as in the Stormwater Management Bylaw." And here I note that the term fiscal appears exactly twice in our bylaws applicable to senior housing, once in Section 8.2 and once in Section 10.5.2. Thus, fiscal concerns are not exclusive drivers in this process. Rather, they are considerations that must be contextualized where the thrust of the bylaws is to provide the town with environmentally sensitive development plans that emphasize sustainability and resiliency, not perpetual maintenance and oversight with their unknown costs. So rather than follow the spirit and ten of the Senior Housing Bylaw and its design provisions as implemented in the Planning Board Rules and Regulations with respect to the site, the applicant imposed its development on the upland portion of the site instead of attempting to integrate it into the landscape. That decision led to a cascade of issues, most notably, in my view, safety, lack of adequate visual and noise buffering, and ramifications to abutters in the wider neighborhood from years of construction. While all construction has its disruptions, a project spanning at best four years with associated noise diesel fumes and voluminous truck traffic is, in the words of the planning board member from the neighboring town of Essex, quote-unquote, "too big a dig," and evidences disregard for the design provisions replete in Section 8.2.12. Accordingly, I find that the applicant's project does not satisfy Section 8.2.31.7. Addressing Section 10.5.2, "I find that the adverse effects of the proposed use outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town or to the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to the site." And I rely for support the views on my views that I have just expressed in my findings. And then addressing, rather, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9, "I find that the issuance of the special permit is not for use in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the Senior Housing Bylaw." And here I add that this section of Mass. Juces's law, I believe, undercuts any notion that the purposes and intent of our Senior Housing Bylaw can be considered aspirational. To hold otherwise would violate state law and suggest that when the Senior Housing Bylaw was adopted by the citizens of Hamilton, it didn't mean what it says and was going to be interpreted in a manner that produced development at any cost so long as there was increased density, a nod to open space, and fiscal benefits. Nothing could be further from the truth. So with that said, I've monopolized some time. How long did I go?
Thirty-one minutes.
Thirty-one minutes.
Marnie?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I forgot, who did, I can't remember. Who did you say wrote that? Is that, did you?
Yes, I wrote it.
You wrote it, okay.
Pat, would you like to go?
Sure. I guess I'll start in the same place you did and hopefully be a lot shorter. That'll be guaranteed, actually. I guess I'm going to start at the same point in 8.2.31.1. The compatibility of adjacent land uses, I understand and recognize that the Senior Housing Bylaw is meant to allow for some variety of land use, but I don't believe that the intent of the bylaw would be then to do that at the consequence of the neighborhood and the adjacent land, which I believe this particular project and its design and the scope of it does. So I'd find that it does not comply with 8.2.31.1. As far as the mitigation to the impact of abutting land and natural resources, air quality, noise, dust, vibrations, stormwater runoff, and the rest of it, you know, the design and the scope of the development kind of forced this to be a difficult thing to engineer as far as mitigating solutions are available for a site like this. But I do believe there are some conditional elements we could impose to further mitigate whatever the engineers and project team have proposed. So on this point, I guess I'm kind of down the middle, but I would lean towards it not complying with the intent of what's proposed here. And that's just basically because of, again, the scope and design of how the site is utilized. 8.2.31.3, providing the safe and convenient access to the site, and all the other elements Marnie had taken great length to describe. I think you look at this in a couple of different ways. You do look at it during the course of construction, and the nature of the job is going to be very dangerous, and its location makes it even more dangerous. It's going to be difficult to manage the site in all elements and phases with the control of materials during the excavation process and ultimately through construction of the site and the comings and goings of all the traffic that's been discussed at length. As far as the design of the site and the buildings, you know, once construction is done, again, there are conditional elements I think that could be imposed. You know, Marnie referred to the 521 CMR 24 for ramps and things of that nature. You know, these are design considerations that would have to be revisited, and the site would probably look much differently. But I think those are things that should be seriously considered and potentially a condition that could be imposed. So again, it's kind of down the road on this one, down the middle, but generally speaking, I don't believe that the design and scope of the site and how it's been laid out complies with the intent of this requirement in the bylaw. 8.2.31.4, provide adequate capacity for public services. I agree with everybody. The town resources and everyone else have indicated that we do have capacity to support a project this size in that location. So I would find that it does comply with the intent of that element. 8.2.31.5, providing the visual and noise buffering of the development, minimizing the impact of the abutting properties. Again, the design and scope of the site makes this very difficult. I think there are elements of the job in the way some space has been preserved or had been preserved. And some of the engineering elements do help provide some visual noise buffering. But really, it's maximizing the utilization of the sixteen-acre site. And this, the way the site's located, this is a difficult thing to impose. You're not going to build a berm. You're not going to plant a tree that blocks this site from the adjacent properties. I would find that does not comply with the intent of the bylaw. So we got 8.2.31.6, "Providing for the perpetual preservation and maintenance of open space trails and recreation areas." I feel like this project could and will comply with the intent of this point here. And I think conditional approval of the development will allow for preservation of trails and open space. Leaves us with 8.2.31.7. And then again, you know, you could take this point and go down all the other rabbit holes of 8.1 and the other elements, one through however many, six, under seven. I guess every project, every good project anyway, starts with the definition of goals before jumping into design, site planning, engineering, capacity analysis, or financial benefit. The goals of a project, I believe, should and must comply and align with the culture and the values of the town. And ultimately, the intent of this bylaw, I guess, in general, I find that the project, the development, the scope, the location does not ultimately comply with this criteria. I guess it's also, you know, bringing us then to 10.5.2 in weighing the financial benefit against the adverse impacts. It's been discussed at length, the financial benefit, the near term or somewhat near term, you know, at the full utilization of the site and the estimated two percent increase in the town revenue as it relates to, you know, property tax revenue. Again, that's the benefit once the site is fully utilized four to five years from now. That's a significant increase. Two percent of a lot is a lot. But I don't believe that that benefit outweighs the adverse impacts of this next five years of disruption or the long-term establishment of this development. And then, so I guess that leaves us with MGL, Chapter 48, Section 9, where I would, I don't know, I guess we're not voting, but we're all indicating the way we would. And in that sense, I would say that this is not in harmony with the Senior Housing Bylaw, this project or development.
Richard? Thank you, Pat.
How much time was that, Amel?
Wow, nine minutes.
Pretty good.
Richard?
I'm hearing a lot of negative statements about this project. And frankly, I think it's, I don't think it'd be backed up by the quality of the people that are running the project. I think Larry Smith is a very dependable, very honest, very open person. Will do whatever a contractor will do, whatever he needs to do to make everything correct and copacetic. I believe that Mrs. Mann is a very honest legal representative and will do the same thing. I'm not going to be against this project. I think it's, I don't see the problem with it.
Did you want to address any specific, any of the specific findings? Or would you prefer to?
I just think, everything that you read, I just think is all one. I just think, everything that you read, I just think is all one-sided. I think Mrs. Mann should be here to rebut this. Uh, I don't believe any of it.
Uh, well, she, there was that opportunity to do that. We had that, um, uh, we concluded, um, the, uh, public hearing on July twenty-sixth, and as you may recall, um, that, um, the applicant's attorney did, uh, proceed to make all, um, the opening remarks and arguments that, that she could, and then, uh, Attorney Ellison, uh, responded, but then, uh, Attorney Mann was able to, uh, had an opportunity-
No, I, I understand.
... to rebut all those arguments. So would you like to address then Section ten-point-five, point-two?
No, I don't wanna go any further. I just-
Uh, I, I'm, uh, if we could ask Robyn Stein a question, um-
Sorry, I think I have to unmute her.
Uh, yes, uh, Robyn, could you please weigh in? Uh, Richard Boroff is indicating that he doesn't wish to address, uh, Section ten-point-five, point-two, and do you feel the same about Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine?
Sorry, was that question directed at me, or was that?
Well, the question is, is what, what would be the effect of, um, Richard, uh, failing to, um, indicate, uh, a position on Section ten-point-five, point-two, and also Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine?
So, I mean, it, it's helpful for the board members to share their, their thoughts, but ultimately, the board is gonna take a vote, and then, um, as, you know, we've previously discussed, there needs to be a vote of findings, of consensus findings. So, um, if, if he doesn't have anything else to, to say at this time, then it is what it is.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Patrick, is there a way for me to be able to unmute myself in case I need to say anything?
Marnie, may I speak?
Yes.
We have you, uh, we will make you a, uh, co-host, Robyn.
Okay, thank you. I wanna just mute so it doesn't have feedback. Thank you.
Okay, um, I'm looking at ten-five-two, ten-point-five, point-two, and I don't agree with you that the, uh, benefits do not outweigh, uh, the negatives. I think the benefits are gonna be much greater than the negatives.
Okay, well, that's, that was the assessment you had to make.
I can't hear you?
I said, "That's the assessment you had to make."
Yeah.
So, so you did that, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Now, also, what was the second thing that you?
Uh, Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine. That requires you to determine whether or not, uh, the purposes of the senior housing bylaw, I'm, I'm sorry, I will be more, um, uh, I'll be more clear. Um, you must find that the proposed use is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the senior housing bylaw.
Okay.
If determine whether it is or is not in harmony with the purposes.
Right. That's not something I'm capable of answering tonight, but I would like to answer it at the next meeting.
Uh, that unfortunately, uh, isn't going to happen.
And I have to suggest that, given the character of, uh, Mr. Smith and Mrs. Mann, that they would.
Well, I, I'm not sure that answers the question.
Well, that, that's the best answer I can give at this point without having time to study the two references. I didn't know we were gonna-
So, Richard, just to be clear, all you have to do is state whether you believe the project is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the bylaw, or not.
Or not.
I believe that it is.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick.
Okay, so at this juncture, uh, we have pen, a motion pending to, um, uh, grant or, um, deny the special permit for Chabaco Hill Capital Partners. So, um-
Do we need to make a motion for a vote, or?
Uh, we actually have a, a motion pending.
Okay.
So we can now just proceed to vote, so, um-
Marnie, could I make a, a few comments quickly? Less than ten minutes. Uh, one of the important things that other senior housing special permit projects have, yeah, wrestled with and have discussed at length is the comparison of their cluster design with a conventional subdivision design. I'm not sure that we've really addressed that i- in a, in a robust way. Um, another item, too, that I, I wanted to remind people that, um, after, um, Bill made mention of wanting to see a, a map and an aerial of the property, and the property, uh, in the, specifically in the area where the clearance would take place, um, a map came to us with a, an aerial illustrating that. As part of that discussion, I'm recalling, uh, we did talk extensively about and heard extensively about why the roadway access met Chabaco at the location that it did. I know this specific topic was a, a big discussion point, uh, with a number of the members, but, uh, because the wetlands buffer is located as it is, uh, sort of surrounding the property at the swales, uh, that's exactly why they located the access to and from the property as they did. Uh, so that became evident as we looked at those graphics that Bill had asked for. Uh, another point, too, that I think is important for board members to avail themselves of is that, uh, you know, I've heard comments that sixteen-foot lights are too high, they have the potential to make glare and other kinds of, uh, light pollution to other properties. Uh, it's absolutely within the boards' purview to be able to reduce height and make the kinds of conditions that require the lights to be specifically non-glare, uh, and, uh, another point, too, was that, uh, I know some were concerned about lighting on the buildings and what, you know, glare that would, uh, precipitate. I think, you know, again, that is an item that the board has in its discretion to be able to address, uh, but, uh, another factor as part of that consideration, too, goes to public safety, goes to the safety of residents that might live in such a facility, so, uh, I just wanted to bring up those brief items. I think they might be helpful to members.
Did any, uh, anyone want to address any of those items that, um, Patrick brought up?
Uh, Madam Chair, I think this is irrelevant to the vote, so I move that we, I'd suggest we move on to the vote.
Did anyone else? Yes, I agree. Uh, in, in a sense, that ship sailed. Um, so at this juncture, then, uh, I would, um, uh, call upon, uh, each member, um, for their vote on the motion. So Jonathan?
Could you read the motion, just so we, um-
Yeah.
-we know what the motion is?
Actually, it, I don't have the exact language that was used, but it is a motion to approve the special permit application of Chabaco Hill Capital Partners LLC. So it's just a straight motion, uh, up or down on whether to approve the special permit application.
Or not approve.
Or not approve.
I have the minutes here, if you wanna read the motion off the minutes. Do you wanna do that?
Sure, if you have it, them right in front of you.
Just, just so we know what it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, I, I, it's here, now I have to find it. Um, or maybe I can hand it to, to you, since you wrote it, you'll find it quickly. Why don't I do that?
This is what you originally wrote there.
Should be right in there.
Marnie, sorry, I just had a question before we, and, and maybe this has been addressed already, but the, I know that some conditions were drafted and provided previously, is it?
Right, but the conditions are only applicable i- if you're voting, um, in favor of the project, and, and I believe that, uh, if you can't make all of the findings, um, that are set forth in Section eight-point-two, point-three, one-point-seven, you're not voting to approve the project.
Got it, thank you.
So, Marnie, if, this is Robyn Stein again, just to confirm, there, you're not including any conditions then in the motion to approve?
We're voting on the motion to approve. If the motion to approve, um, receives the requisite number of votes in favor, we will, we will talk about conditions. I think to talk about conditions, uh, now, uh, is not appropriate.
But I, I understand, it is my recommendation that all motions contain the conditions, but I understand your point.
I think the original discussion was a mo- motion to approve with conditions, or a motion not to approve.
Right, I, my recollection, I-
Conditions are to be read by individuals, they were submitted.
Yes, i- if someone, you know, was going through the findings and was intending to, um, conclude that the motion should be granted, it was their opportunity to indicate what conditions they would attach to their, uh, favorable, uh, view of the motion. I wasn't going to go through a whole list of conditions, uh, that, that, if, if the, the consensus is to deny the motion.
We found the motion?
I'm looking for the motion. Okay, uh, Mr. Poor moved to approve the, uh, the special permit application of Chabaco Hill Capital Partners. You, Rick Mitchell, uh, provided a second to the motion, so it's really, uh, um, uh, a motion to approve.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we knew if, whether we're voting yes or no, 'cause, you know.
Yes, it's a, a yes or no vote.
Do you need to repeat the motion, or do I need to repeat the motion, or can I just vote?
Oh, well, but it is a mo- what's pending before us right now is a motion to approve the special permit application. It's a yes or no vote.
Okay, ready?
Jonathan Poor?
I vote no.
Bill Wheaton?
I vote no.
Rick Mitchell?
I vote yes.
Amel Dahlquist?
I vote no.
Uh, Pat Norton?
I vote no.
Uh, Marnie Crouch votes no. Uh, Richard Boroff?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Uh, and at this juncture, what I need to do, just by my notes, um, so, um, what I need now is a motion to approve the findings, um, of board members voting i- in opposition to the motion. So, uh, I, I would think that that would mean that there's a vote to, um, to, uh, write up, uh, the findings that support the denial of this motion. So I, uh, so if anyone would like to do that, it's a motion to, to approve findings, and those, those findings will be set forth in a decision that will then be circulated, uh, to board members for their review and any revisions.
So-
So, Marnie, just that, Marnie, can I, just to clarify, so you're gonna, the vote is to essentially adopt the findings that have been articulated at the public deliberations by the members voting no?
Right.
And then, just for, just to go over the process quickly, so a draft decision can be prepared, um, but it will be reviewed and commented, commented on at a future open meeting. There can't be any, um, commenting by email.
Okay.
For open meeting law purposes.
So just clarif-
The week.
Just clarification, who drafts the findings?
So they would be based off the comments that were already stated at this public meeting, um, recited into a document that I assume Marnie's gonna take the lead on preparing, and then the board can review it at, um, a meeting in the future-
Yes.
-and then make any changes there. So the, they'll be generally incorporated based off, i- if you vote to adopt the findings as stated during the deliberations, they'll be recited into a draft decision, and the board can review it, and it can make any necessary changes and vote to adopt the actual decision of the board, so you'll have a chance to re- to review it in front of you at another public session.
Exactly, and so-
So, just question, so the findings, the only findings you need are the ones that support the no vote, right?
Exactly, and, and, um, if Robyn is amenable, I, I will, uh, proceed to, to draft something, but I, I would like to consult with her because, uh, I think it's important to, to note some of the nuances to the vote. So not every member, uh, who voted against this motion, uh, agreed on every single aspect of each finding.
Yeah, and, and Marnie, I think it, it makes sense for, for you and I to work on that together, and then the board as a whole can review it at a future public, uh, meeting, consistent with the open meeting law.
So it's essentially a motion to, um, to adopt the findings of the board as they will be set forth in a written decision that will be circulated, subject to review and revision.
Yep, and, and based off the, the deliberations today, you know, made by the board.
Right, so do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Wait, whoa, 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 excuse me, so moved is not a valid motion. You need to specify exactly what you're moving.
Marnie just spelled it out. She can say it again.
It is a motion to approve, uh, findings that will be set forth in a written decision consistent with the board's deliberations.
Would you like me to move it again?
We can help you.
So moved.
No, you can't, you can't do so moved.
So moved is fine.
Say the motion.
Uh, Robyn is saying it's fine.
I think so moved is fine, um, but i- if you want me to try to state it one more time, I, I can try to help with that.
No, I don't think you need to do that.
Okay.
Okay, so-
All right, so it's been moved, it's been seconded.
I said, I'm the one that seconded.
Right, so let's follow.
Okay, so when I call your name, would you please, uh, indicate whether you, um, approved this motion or not?
Can you state what the motion is so that I understand?
It is a motion to approve the findings of the board, uh, denying the special permit, um, as will be set forth in a written decision, consistent with the board's deliberations, that will then be prepared and circulated and subject to review and revision by the board.
Okay, so it doesn't mean that you agree with the findings, it's just that you, the findings that, as they were delineated, are correct. Is that correct?
I'm going to set forth all the findings by board members who voted against this motion, I, and I will make note of, um, findings that may not be, um, consistent with that. I intend to, to indicate, uh, how the board deliberated, but-
Okay.
-the findings that are going to be dispositive of the motion will be those reflected by all the board members, all five of the board members who voted against this motion. So when I call your name, would you indicate whether you, um, uh, approved this motion? Jonathan Poor?
I vote yes.
Bill Wheaton?
I vote yes.
Amel Dahlquist?
I vote yes.
Richard Boroff?
I vote yes, understanding that, that doesn't mean that I'm for declining the motion.
Uh, Rick Mitchell, you said yes?
No, I haven't voted yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rick Mitchell.
I vote yes.
And Marnie Crouch? Yes.
Patrick?
Pat, you, you said Patrick.
I vote yes, Elsa.
It's my left flank, I lose it all the time.
I vote yes, Elsa.
Okay, so at this juncture, we can, I, I think maybe a five-minute recess, if anyone would like to take advantage- anyone would like to take advantage of that, and then we'll turn to storm water management. Is that agreeable? Anybody like to stretch their legs a little bit?
Yeah.
Take a little breather. So, we're ready to start, so, at this stage in the proceedings, we're going to take up the storm water management permit application, followed by Tobacco Hill Capital Partners, LLC. So, the first order of business is to entertain a motion to approve the storm water management permit for Tobacco Hill's Capital Partners. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
And now I will open up the application for discussion by board members. Does anyone wish to start?
So, I think that last meeting, I know Jonathan had extensive comments on that, is that what we're looking for? Or can you just sort of frame how you see this laying out?
What I see is reviewing the applicable storm water management bylaw, regulations, and the references within those documents to volume one and volume two of the Massachusetts Storm Water Handbook. So, I think that perhaps we could start with a brief synopsis of those provisions. I can certainly do that, but if anyone else would like to take the laboring, or I'm not adverse to that.
I guess my question in terms of process is, since so much of 8.1.12 is environmental sensitive site design, which is what the storm water management lens for the same process is, they're the same thing, just different words, one's got a number, one's got a word, how much of this do we need to repeat?
Yeah.
And my goal would be not to repeat it.
And. Because I think you did a wonderful job of going through it.
Why, thank you.
Section by section.
Why, thank you.
Word by word.
So, the one thing that, from my own vantage point, that I think could be useful is just, for my purposes, I could just highlight the page numbers, and they just repeat the page numbers that I had suggested for reading months and months ago to the board. It's a few words, that just, to read the page numbers into the record of the things that apply to environmentally sensitive site design, which is the central focus here.
Okay.
So, I'm trying to cut to the chase here.
And I agree with you. Do you have at your fingertips the actual provisions in chapter 29?
I don't have the provisions in chapter 29, I have more of the state storm water management standards. So, do you, if you have 29, why don't you do that, and I'll do.
Okay, and what I think I'll do is just highlight, you know, just a few things, so that the participants have some sense of where we're coming from. So, the Hamilton Storm Water Management Bylaw is in chapter 29 of the Hamilton Bylaws, it is not in the zoning bylaw. And just to, a brief familiarity with the purposes, one of the purposes is to encourage the use of low-impact development practice, such as reducing impervious cover and the preservation of green space and other natural areas to the maximum extent practicable. Low-impact development is defined as a set of strategies that seek to maintain natural systems during the development process. The idea is to create homes and businesses that are integrated into the landscape, not imposed on it. Natural areas are important features, are to be protected, and storm water management is managed and distributed network of swales and rain gardens, rather than a centralized systems of pipes and ponds. And another purpose in subsection F is to comply with state and federal statutes and regulations relating to storm water discharges. Section 5 of the town bylaw regarding storm water management provides, and this leads to what Jonathan will reference, the permit authority, which in this case is the planning board, will utilize the policy, criteria, and information, including specifications and standards of the latest edition of the Massachusetts Storm Water Management Policy, to execute the provisions of this bylaw. This policy includes a list of acceptable storm water treatment practices, including the specific design criteria for each. The policy may be updated and expanded periodically, based on improvements in engineering, science, monitoring, and local maintenance experience. Unless specifically altered in the regulations, storm water treatment practices that are designed, constructed, and maintained, in accordance with these design and sizing criteria will be presumed to be protected of Massachusetts water quality. And our regulations, the ones that were in effect when this application was filed, do reference minimizing total area disturbance. And then, at section 4D of our regulations, it requires that any storm water management plan be designed to meet the Massachusetts Storm Water Management Standards as set forth in part B of this section and DEP handbook, volumes one and two, or the most recent edition of that handbook. And the regulations also require the use of low-impact development techniques. So, Jonathan, if you want to just highlight the provisions of the Massachusetts Storm Water Management Handbook?
Sure, so again, paralleling the things that I talked about regarding 8.1.12, which has nothing to do this jurisdictionally, but it's all the same subject, which is that what's key is, the first decisions regarding site design are to be based on understanding, inventorying, and delineating protected and unprotected resource areas, same wording, same stuff. And, and again, the Massachusetts defines that as environmentally sensitive site design, and they actually have a definition, and the definition is in, in volume one, I'm not going to read the definition, but what I'll do is, I'm going to reference the pages that are pertinent here, so they can go into the findings. And then, it's prioritized in volume two, and I've read that before, saying that BMPs come last, environmentally sensitive site design comes first, there's three components, I've been through that many, many times, I'm not going to repeat it. And then, the sedimentation and erosion control guidelines sort of elucidate why these principles are important, and how to apply them in pictures and words. So, that's sort of the general picture there, I don't think I need to repeat much more, but I'm going to now give you, just give you the page numbers that I think should go into the findings, ready?
Yes, and if you have them, you can also.
I'll submit them in writing, but for the public, I will read them.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, so Massachusetts Storm Water Management Standards, volume one, chapter one, pages one through four. And again, these are things that are non-engineering, or they relate to engineering, but they're planning board-related type criteria, that's why I'm separating these things out. They're environmentally, they explain and elucidate environmentally sensitive site design. Okay, same document, volume two, chapter one, pages one through six, and page 15. And then, mass erosion and sediment control guidelines for urban and suburban areas by DEP, part one, principles and planning, pages one through 50, one through 50. With, and just for anybody's benefit, on page 42 and 43 is actually something that literally mirrors 8.1.12. It's a list of what you need to do, to start the process off. So, I think that's kind of all I need to say from my end, unless there's something else that's needed to elucidate this.
Do I have any other comments from any other members of the board with respect to storm water?
So, let me ask Jonathan a question, so you're saying that the project did not follow these guidelines in the state statutes?
Exactly, it's excellent engineering, outstanding engineering, in this case, they lifted a very heavy weight, really star engineering, but that's not the first step.
Well, I think it's important to note, the recommendation, those are recommendations for good design, those are not.
They're ranked.
They're not statutory.
They're ranked, they're ranked.
I understand, they're not statutory requirements.
No, they are not, but they're ranked.
Right.
And the applicant, as we've talked endlessly, did not even make an attempt in the 14 acres.
No, I got that, I just wanted to be clear for, on Bill's question, those are suggested procedures and process for doing the design as you described, I just wanted to differentiate that.
Well, our bylaw is direct an applicant to that handbook.
Oh, I know, volume two is a recommendation, not a requirement.
Well, I would have to at least just stop you a little bit, because volume one actually.
Is.
Is.
Oh, I agree.
And I counted, I actually downloaded volume one.
So did I.
Into Word, and it references environmentally sensitive site design 10 times. And, so I don't think you can conclude from that, that volume two, which deals with those design issues and ranks, what should happen, is not really binding, because volume one.
So, your view is, your view is volume two is just an elucidation of volume one, not an appendage of some sort?
Well, I think our regulations refer to both.
Okay.
But volume one is not just simply meet the standards, it does reference how you meet those standards.
Oh, absolutely.
And one of the ways, and the most important way of doing that is to start with environmentally sensitive design.
Right, but let's be clear, volume one is the governing document, and that was the document that the applicant used, and our peer review team used, to determine whether in fact, the applicant had met the requirements in volume one, and they did in fact verify that those requirements had been met.
BMPs were met.
I do not think that our storm water management bylaw says, if you meet volume one, and a peer reviewer says you did, that that's all you have to do, and that's the issue here. That's the precise issue here.
Well, that's your interpretation.
Well, right, but I'm not sure that that's the correct interpretation.
A peer reviewer is assigned essentially to look at the BMP process, they're not assigned to look at the initial assumptions about design.
No, I get that, I get that.
And the board, this board would have, really, would be irrelevant in the process, because otherwise, it's just software. The BMPs are actually designed with software, so you could just check the box and say, yep, you've completed the software package, and you got 80% of the total suspended solids out. That's not what the bylaw says, it's not what the standards say, it's not what our mandate is.
Well, and I'm going to, then, I will read one thing, maybe, and it will help you with, and this is in volume one, on page three, I believe, and it says, "Project proponents seeking to demonstrate compliance with some or all of the storm water management standards to the maximum extent practicable shall demonstrate that," and this is number two, "They have made a complete evaluation of possible storm water management measures, including environmentally sensitive site design, low-impact development techniques that minimize land disturbance and impervious surfaces, structural storm water best management practices, pollution prevention, erosion and sedimentation control, and proper operation and maintenance of storm water best management practices." So, it's not off the table, in other words.
No, no, I get it, but again, this is an interpretation, it says to the maximum extent possible. So, I agree, that maximum extent possible, and good design, that would be the appropriate thing to do. Again, it's not mandated. I don't want to get into this argument.
Okay.
Because I know where this vote is going, so I just wanted to make that point, so let's move on.
Well, does anyone else have any comments? Did you have anything more, Bill? Jonathan?
No.
No. Amel?
No.
Pat?
I have nothing to add.
Richard?
Nothing to add.
Well, in that case, I think we've all had our say, so, I think it's time to vote on the motion, do we have to repeat the motion?
I don't think so.
Okay, so when I call your name, would you please indicate which way you intend to vote on the motion?
Just tell, make sure I understand the vote, or if we, what does a yes and no mean, just so.
A yes means you approve.
Okay, got it.
The application, the no vote means you deny the application.
Got it, thank you.
Jonathan?
I vote no.
Marty, sorry, before you vote, can I just clarify for purposes of the record that you've essentially incorporated into this discussion, all the prior discussion on storm water that was raised, and the discussion on special permit?
Uh, sure.
Okay, thank you.
We will include that. Bill Wheaton?
I know.
Amel Dahlquist?
No.
Richard Boroff?
Yes.
Rick Mitchell?
Yes.
Pat Norton?
No.
And Marty Crouch? No. So, at this point, then, I need to entertain a motion similar to the one that we did for the special permit, so a motion to approve the findings of the board members voting in opposition to the motion. So, when I call your name, would you please indicate?
These, this will be a report like the.
It will be similar.
Or that we prepared for the zoning bylaw?
Right.
Right, okay.
So, when I call you.
To clarify, sorry, Jonathan voted no, correct?
On the motion?
I voted no on the storm water permit.
And then, the same as the special permit, we'll work to prepare a decision for the board to review, so it can adopt and approve a final decision with the findings, but they'll be drawn from the comments during all of the deliberations?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Okay, so we're now considering a motion to approve the findings, based on the deliberations, not just at this meeting, but at the prior meeting, on the, on the motion to approve the findings, as they will be set forth in a written decision, that the board will have an opportunity to review and revise if necessary. So, Jonathan Poor?
So, excuse me, this vote doesn't have anything to do with what we voted before, is that correct?
No, this is just a vote to approve the drafting of a written decision that reflects the vote of the board.
Okay.
Did we make that motion?
I just.
There's no motion or second yet.
So, so moved.
The motion, I articulated what the motion should say.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, I'm just writing down this for my education, okay, so, Jonathan Poor?
I vote yes.
Bill Wheaton?
I vote yes.
Amel Dahlquist?
Yes.
Richard Boroff?
Yes.
Rick Mitchell?
Yes.
Pat Norton?
Yes.
And Marty Crouch, yes. And with that, I think we're concluded, our, this marathon, it wasn't a sprint, it was a marathon, it's not concluded, it's almost concluded, we have to, we have to consider the decisions, but at this point, at the very early hour of eight o'clock, we could move to board business.
Marty, before you move on, can we just confirm the date the board's coming back to review the decisions?
We have a meeting on October 11th, and then, and then the following meeting is on October 18th, is that correct?
I don't think you want to go too far into October, just with the, you know, 90 days, do you want to say you're going to come back on the 11th, or did you want to?
The 11th.
It's up to you.
The 11th is what we've already scheduled. 11th is what we've already scheduled.
We have a meeting scheduled on October 11th, and then again on the 18th.
Okay. So, we're planning for the 11th to review the decisions?
Yes, yes.
So, October 11th and 18th are the next meetings?
They're the next two meetings.
Okay. Marty, do you need me to stay on for anything else?
No, thank you for your input.
All right. Thank you, then. Have a good night, everyone.
Right. So, with respect to board business, we have minutes from July 26 to consider. Does anyone have any comments about the minutes from July 26?
I'll vote to approve the minutes of July 26, 2022.
Second.
So, when I call your name, could you indicate whether or not you approve the minutes? Rick Mitchell? Richard Boroff?
Yes.
Jonathan Poor?
Yes.
Amel Dahlquist?
Yes.
And Marty Crouch? Oh, Bill Wheaton?
Yes.
And Marty Crouch, yes. I don't believe, Pat, you're authorized to vote on the minutes, but the minutes were approved by all members present.
Would if I could?
Should, would Corey vote on that?
Would Corey vote on that?
Why?
He's an associate member as well.
An associate. He's not a voting member.
He's not a voting member, so...
So, we don't need, I was just wondering if...
In best absence.
I don't know.
I don't...
He should sit in best absence, I think. Should have been appointed earlier. Well, he should be appointed now.
I don't know that he would be appointed for this purpose in her absence. I don't know. Do you know, Patrick?
I don't believe so.
I don't think he's entitled to vote on minutes. And we have a quorum of the board. We have unanimous...
I didn't mean to confuse things, sorry.
But you did.
I did.
So, we can't consider the minutes from July 30 because they didn't make the agenda. They'll make the agenda for the next meeting. So, save up all your comments with respect to the July, I'm sorry, July, what am I talking about? September 13 meeting until our meeting on October 11. So, with that said, does anybody else have any board business that they'd like to discuss?
Marty, I have a question related, yes, I think this is new board business. We have a series of developments going on on Bridge Street, a string of adjacent Form A houses on extreme slopes. And our initial pass at this was that each of these lots has had a surveyor say that less than one acre of each lot is being cleared, and that's been supposedly certified, although I haven't seen the certifications. And therefore, they are exempt from our stormwater bylaw. Okay. Now, as I read the stormwater bylaw on page two, there's this application for smaller projects, okay, and...
Is that, are you referring to regulations or the bylaw?
This is applicability, smaller projects. This is the actual bylaw.
Is that the one that was yellow marked?
No, this is part that has not been yellowed out in Patrick's.
I think, I apologize for correcting you, but I think you're referring to the rules and regulations. Because the rules and regulations have, they differentiate between small and large projects.
Right.
So, you're referring to the regulations?
Yes. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
And what it says on the second page is that you can file for an abbreviated smaller project, which is what they did, provided that you're not clearing more than a certain amount of land, as long as the lot is not an A and R lot that is adjacent to other lots which are currently under construction and have not yet been issued occupancy permits. It's right there. It's point number one under application for smaller projects. Now, when I looked at that, I thought, what's going on here is they want to make sure that somebody doesn't string together a bunch of Form As, you know, and treat them as independent and therefore not having to come before us, when it's really actually a nine, in the case of Bridge Street, it's operating as if it was a nine-unit subdivision. And in fact, the land was one parcel at one point. And so, I really would like town council, I think Patrick asked town council about this once, and I've reread this over and over again. And I just think these guys on Bridge Street are getting away with something that they shouldn't be. I think they should come under our purview as specified in this section. But I, you know, since I'm not a lawyer...
Right.
I would like somebody to really, again, take a really good, really good look at this.
And I agree with you. And I've actually raised this issue, and I know the abutters are really concerned about this. Actually, I think it's an individual who bought your house, your old house.
Yes. I mean, I'm saying this, I've long since left the property. I don't have an interest here.
No, but I...
But I'm just, I'm thinking that these two paragraphs, where the first paragraph of this application for smaller projects applies, and that these people should be coming before us.
Right. And to your point, the stormwater management bylaw...
Bylaw, not the rules and regs.
The bylaw itself says, "A permit from the," I'm reading just the relevant part, "a permit from the permit authority shall be required for any construction activity including clearing, grading, and excavation that results in a land disturbance that will disturb equal to or greater than one acre of land, or will disturb less than one acre of land, but which is part of a larger common plan of development or sale, which will ultimately disturb equal to or greater than one acre of land draining to the town's municipal separate storm sewer system." And I would like to know what that language means.
Yes. That's a slightly perturbed wording from what's under rules and regs.
But the rules and regulations do elucidate that to some extent. And I not infrequently go and look at the real estate listings in Hamilton, and I have observed that these lots contain houses that haven't been built, but they're being marketed as being similar in style by the same real estate agent. So, what does that mean? Part of a larger common plan of development or sale. I don't know who owns each of the individual lots there, but when you see that the style of the housing is very similar, and the lots are all with the same...
They're all the same size. They're all front on the road.
It's, we need an interpretation.
We need an interpretation.
And you could actually say, well, we're reading this literally. Take us to court.
Well, what I'd like to get an interpretation...
I get it, I get it.
No, but regardless of what happens with respect to Bridge Street and what the interpretation is, the first thing on our agenda is to take a look at the stormwater management bylaw, and to the extent that there's uncertainty or clarity or whatever, we need to address this issue. Because if it's a loophole, it's a loophole, and it needs to be closed.
So, why don't we ask the town council to give us an opinion?
Yes. And, you know, I don't know whether or not this portion of the bylaw has ever been interpreted before, but I think that I would like to get a formal, a formal opinion from town council, and maybe the town council can investigate when exactly this provision, it's Section 4A, was inserted.
The land was originally a single piece of land that was purchased. And so, that is the developer, and he chose to develop it by...
Well, it was a trustee of the...
Actually, it was a limited liability company that was formed by an alumni from Gordon Commo Theological Seminary. I looked that up.
So, I think what they're trying to do is saying, well, it's not a common development. It's each individual lot is being sold, not to a same developer. They're partially...
They're being sold off directly to builders, actually.
Right, right. So, I think that's, you know, they're trying to skirt that by saying, well, it's not part of a, and the key word is common development. So, that's the...
Right, to me...
What does common development mean? Does that refer to a specific, like subdivision common development, or common development that looks...
It's not a subdivision, it's not a Form B subdivision, but it's a common...
Common as in subdivision.
I would like to see us take, you know, the heaviest hand on this we can because it's a scary proposition to drive by these lots.
I agree.
Okay. So, Patrick, do you think it's necessary that we follow a motion to, perhaps that would be best. Let's have a motion to have town council investigate this subsection, or this section of the town bylaw and its concomitant regulation, and give us an opinion as to whether it can be applied to what is happening on Bridge Street, or whether or not it cannot be applied to what happens in Bridge Street. And to me, it actually might present something of an evidentiary issue, because I think there might be common ownership of some of the lots.
Yes, there actually is. There is two, there is, builders are doing more than just one. It's not nine builders.
So, there's an evidentiary aspect to this, and then a legal aspect to this as to what was intended by the insertion of this language. It wasn't inserted to have a meaningless outcome. I mean, it was there for a reason. What precipitated this language? What do we know about the genesis of this language? And has it ever been used with respect to any projects in town? And what would be the advice with respect to using this? And whatever that advice may be, it doesn't stop us from trying to make this language more intelligible by defining what a larger common plan of development or sale is. So, I think, since we're now talking about something as important as this, my thinking all along has been that, now that we're finishing up the special permit with respect to 133 Essex, that we can turn our talents to looking at this stormwater management bylaw and trying to make it more clear and better in all respects. So, that's something we can put on our agenda probably maybe for the meeting after October.
Yes, we don't want to delay, given the rapacious nature of their equipment in clearing the land.
Right. And, you know, that's not to say that this, that town council will come up with any result that is or is not applicable to Zero Bridge Street. But, and it may be that, I don't know if I want to say our hands are tied, but certainly going forward, if we amend this document so there's no wiggle room in it at all, that would help. And then, we can address maybe some other issues with respect to this bylaw as well. And, you know, the one benefit of looking at the town bylaw as opposed to the zoning bylaw is that I don't believe we have to have a public hearing on the amendments to the town bylaw.
I believe that's the case.
That's the case. So, it's a less formal and fraught process. So, is there anything else on, since we're talking about future work, that anyone thinks would be appropriate to bring up for the fall? Any ideas?
I would love, while the sort of memory is fresh, to look at the senior housing bylaw and look at what worked and what didn't work, and what was ambiguous or contradictory, and see if there's anything that should come out of that discussion.
I don't have a problem with that. And of course, I don't think, Jonathan, you were on the board, but we spent a lot of time on a flexible development bylaw, and that flexible development bylaw was crafted to track the senior housing bylaw in many respects. So, the two could proceed simultaneously on that front. But why not at the next meeting, we dive into the stormwater management town bylaw a little bit? And if everyone has an opportunity to read through it carefully, we could start making comments about what we would change, what we would add, and that type of thing. So, whether this document is something that's workable, or whether it has to really be, some of the aspects of it would have to be addressed by a zoning bylaw. So, really just kind of, really go through the bylaw with a fine-tooth comb and the associated regs to try and, you know, get some clarity on what's intended. I think the regulations have to be the subject of a public hearing. Is that right, Patrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to foreshadow next year's potential workload, I'd like the opportunity to address the planning board at a future date and provide a summary of the working group that you tasked Amel and I to follow up on at Gordon Theological Seminary.
Absolutely, yes.
More than like, this is an accelerated, it's going to be an accelerated strategic analysis of options for, that provide the highest and best use for the seminary and the town, with the goal of providing the planning board with a template of potential bylaws encompassing uses that the seminary and the town have agreed, and the abutters have agreed would be acceptable, with the hope that that can be considered by the planning board in public hearings held, and the bylaw potentially submitted for spring town meeting consideration. So, first of the year, probably January, mid-January, that may show up.
Okay, well, that...
That's a very important piece of property.
Say again?
It's a very important piece of property.
Yes, and I'm delighted to say that the seminary has agreed to contribute to the cost of this strategic study. And nobody's entering this group that includes the president, the project manager for moving the campus to some other location, and their attorney have agreed to participate with no preconceived notions of what may or may not happen. They're looking to maximize their revenue, but they also are looking to be responsible citizens and have something developed that respects the wishes of the town and the abutters. So, stay tuned. It's going to be an accelerated project, and hopefully, it will yield something that we can all look at and agree on.
Well, I think, I think that the three topics, at least the two most immediate ones, could easily fill our agenda for the fall and early winter. So...
If I just, wait, I think the flexible zoning one for the downtown area is of a longer term, right, project?
Well, actually, it was...
Depending on the status of the Winthrop School?
That's different.
Yeah, the flexible development bylaw...
Forty percent open space require minimum requirement to even start talking about density bonuses.
Yeah, I can provide... Yeah, you'll, I can provide you with a draft of it, but after going through?
I thought that was part of the downtown area.
No, 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 but after going through the senior housing bylaw, the flexible development bylaw, you know, goes back on the, on the drawing board.
Oh, okay.
Lessons learned.
Okay.
And there's nothing like having to go through this process where you dig into things, where you, you actually understand how they work. You know, when you just read them in the abstract, they sound fine, which is, might be why we have an open space and farmland preservation development bylaw that was adopted in 2005 and was never used. It's, it seems like it was?
Should be struck.
It was great on paper, but in, in practice, it didn't generate any interest, and so in the senior housing bylaw, you go through it and you go, well, this could be an issue here, and this here, and you can really clean it out based on practice.
You have to remember the times when they were enacted, these were political documents. The open space and farmland preservation development bylaw was named that to make it palatable to the town that was addressing for the first time the opportunity to move from exclusive, single-family housing to some higher level of density. So it was, looking back at it, a very clumsy attempt to mollify everybody and provide a developer an opportunity to do a higher level of density, but it was very ham-handed and really did not recognize the reality of the builders' requirements and the reality of the marketplace. So developers looked at it and go, well, it's voluntary, I don't want to do that, I can make, you know, it doesn't, it's too onerous for me to do, so just background there.
Right.
So what I would like to add is, just as this discussion right now, if you, if you look at how it's, it's unfolded, there are sort of tendrils that go into various bylaws, you know, everything's connected.
Yeah.
And I'm not suggesting an ambitious overhaul of the bylaws, but an opportunity is, as we go through all these processes, to keep an open mind to how these bylaws interlink, and which ones are working, which ones aren't working, and kind of rank in our minds which ones need the most attention the soonest. And it might not mean that we get to it very soon, but to just start thinking about ranking the, the priorities of how these bylaws, which ones are most out of date, which ones need the most attention. So it's sort of, in a sense, a master plan of how to look forward to updating and refreshing these bylaws. That's all.
In order to do that, I think we need a list of all of these bylaws.
It will happen organically, I think, during the discussion, so I'm just encouraging looking at it from a whole systems point of view, just like we were asked to look at the bylaws in harmony in our vote.
Yes.
That would be the, the estate overlay, too, would be part of that.
Yes, indeed.
That was mine.
So it doesn't, it doesn't limit it, it just, but what it does is it keeps you looking at the big picture, you don't dive into everything, but you make a list.
Yeah.
You know, this is more important to do when we have time than not, that's all.
Yeah, no, I agree, but is there consensus that we should really look at stormwater first?
Yeah, I think we've agreed that.
Yeah, okay, so, boy, I, I'm so excited, I might be able to eat dinner before nine o'clock, assuming I get a motion to adjourn.
Oh, no, don't give it to her.
I make a motion, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Damn. I was hoping to get a dinner invitation.
Well, if you like previously frozen risotto, because that's what we're having, and that, I'll tell you, isn't as good as when it's fresh.
Okay, we've got a motion to adjourn, and I think it's accurate.
Okay, so Rick Mitchell?
Aye.
Richard Boroff?
Aye.
Jonathan Poor?
Aye.
Amel Dahlquist?
Aye.
Bill Wheaton?
Aye.
And Marty Crouch, aye, unanimous.